Good morning, everyone. I'll call the Crowing County Committee of the Hall Meeting for January 21st, 2025 to order. Jesse, if you'll call the roll, please.
Commissioner Coring.
Here.
Commissioner Lubke.
Here.
Commissioner Barrows.
Here.
Commissioner Franzine.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you very much. Our first item of business today is the county recreation update. Tom and Chris, you'll walk us through it. Appreciate it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Tom has an update on some of the, of our 2024 Parks Day he's going to share with us today.
Yeah, good morning. So annually, we like to come before the board and talk about our county parks, our county OHV trails, and then some of our non-motorized trails. So for 2024, we had our car counters out again this year at our now, well, our four main county parks that we can get to via vehicle. So that is Milford, Little Emily, which is new this year, South Long Lake, and the Fire Tower. And so as somebody drives into our park, we count them with a, it's basically a little metal detector that we bury in the ground, and then as they leave, they get counted again. So we have to divide the numbers in half, which we've done up here on the screen, but we're happy and excited this year that we broke over 100,000 at our four parks. And we should note that we did add Little Emily, which was about 20,000, and that we started putting that out about August. So it's just really cool to see that people are out using the parks that we've invested in, used our timber resources to build, and it's just really cool. And the feedback that we've gotten has been nothing but exceptional, and hopefully you've heard that as well. But we just wanted to share that it's a very good year. One thing I will point out is we do use volunteer counts out at the Big Island, the Raleigh-Johnson Big Island. And so this year, they did indicate that it was a down year. They were at about 380 for day use people, and so it doesn't really show up on the, on our graphs up here, but it is getting used still. People are out camping and enjoying, and it'll be interesting to see how that works out, just because of the storm that they had this year with the tornado that went over the island. We'll see what that user count does. That group is currently working on figuring out the trails on the island and getting most of those reopened, so.
Tom, I have a quick question for you on Little Emily.
Yes.
How much of that green is you walking back and forth inspecting that?
Hopefully not too much.
Okay.
We, and we will see that that certainly could be a few counts. We tried to put that counter out once the, once they were done with most of the construction, so that way we weren't getting, you know, five people that were working on the park counted every single time. But in truth, some of these are from staff that go in there. We have no way of eliminating that, but still, it's, it's still a fairly good number of people that are coming and using our parks.
I think it's amazing, you know, and I think it shows the attractiveness of our parks, and I think it's only going to get better with the Milford development over there, so. Appreciate it very much.
We agree. So if you want to move on to the next slide, please. OHV trails, yes. So we also placed a couple of car counters. Remember, these were repurposed from our AIS program from, well, these are probably 2014, I think they are.
Yep.
We've invested in a few new ones over the years. The unfortunate part is, is this year we did have one that got stolen. They're only, they're not very big, you know, but somebody decided to walk off with it, so we did lose a little bit of data there. And we also inadvertently destroyed one ourselves when we were doing some trail work, and a dozer caught it. So we try to be careful, but sometimes accidents do happen. But we just wanted to present this data as well. When you total everything up, we're at about 90,000 for ATVs that traverse through our ATV trails. By far, you know, we have some, some really popular ones, like the Emily Blind Lake, the Emily Outing Trails, the Mississippi River Northwoods Trails, and then we also see some, some increases in the Miller Blackbird Trails, just, just based on the new construction that we opened this year out there as well, so.
Tom, is the kind of light blue color, is that 2024 data?
Yeah, it got cut off on the attachment. So, yeah, so the green is 2022, and then, and then, so the, the dark blue is 2023, and then the light blue is 2024. We can move on to non-motorized trails. Unless there's any questions?
I'm just curious, because you didn't do one that analyzed, puts all the data together.
Yep.
By year? Or did you maybe?
No, we didn't. We did not. And that's something we could add for future years if you'd like. But just, just for this year, we, it was at about 93,000 after we totaled it up. That was one question that came out of our Natural Resources Advisor Committee meeting was, how many total is it? So just did some quick math, and that's what it comes up to.
So this is Land Services math versus?
This is my math.
Boy, your math.
Yeah.
Right.
I did use a calculator, so.
All right. Thank you.
Are you seeing any shifts in which ones are getting used more or less?
Generally, we're just seeing an increase with the popularity of side-by-sides.
Let me ask you a question, because I, one of the discussions, I think, with Darryl Palmer was the side-by-sides are getting wider, much larger. Is that creating a problem on any of the trails?
Some of the first ones, yeah, we had some, we had some trails that were specific to Class 1 only, but a lot of those have been reworked, remodified to accommodate those larger side-by-sides. State statute has been pretty, pretty consistent throughout the years in that it's 72 inches and less. So technically, they can't be any, any wider than that. So, you know, I would think the biggest thing that we see is they're heavier, you know, they're more powerful nowadays, they're able to displace more dirt, which means more maintenance for the clubs. But, but as far as real issues, no, they have a robust trail program, and they, they have trail ambassadors that are out there every weekend, looking at trails, informing users, making sure they're safe. So as far as like safety issues, no, just more maintenance.
Okay.
And all of our trails are maintained by clubs?
All of our ATV trails, yes. Yep. We do some maintenance on our non-motorized trails. Land Services does mow them. We do sign them. The, the ski trails, those are maintained by a club. ATV trails, the snowmobile trails are all maintained by local volunteers. And then, like I just mentioned, we have one more slide here of some of our non-motorized trails. These ones can be a little bit more interesting, just because of, some are really heavily used, and some are not very heavily used. They're used, like the ones up in the northern part of the county, they're used specifically mostly for hunting. Some people use them for horseback riding, so we see lots of activity October, November. Not mu, not much activity in the spring, summer months. But for example, like the Wolf Lake, Wolf Lake Ski Trail, just located in, in Irondale Township, very heavily used by skiers, horseback riders. And this, this data is just during the, the spring, summer, and fall months. It is not winter data. Any other questions from the board?
I'm pretty impressed with the amount of users using these trails, whether they're locals or whether they're not from our local area, but they, they're getting used, and I certainly appreciate it. I think it's, shows us where our revenues come from with that many people coming into our area, utilizing the parks and the trails. And so recreation has to carry a heavy consideration when we're looking at budgets and that, so.
You know, one thing that I, I found interesting, too, that I don't think a lot of people realize is that utilizing the ATV trails, a person can actually ride from Emily to Michigan on ATV trails.
Really?
Yep.
I'd rather have them ride from Michigan to Emily and increase our population.
Yep.
Spend their money here.
It goes both ways. They gotta get back somehow.
Tom and Chris, how much in levy dollars is spent on parks and trails?
None.
Zero.
Just want to make sure that we are recognizing that fact, all of this.
And I appreciate that clarification, because we can give it all the weight we want in our budget process, and it still is zero. So.
Correct.
We appreciate that.
Thank you for pointing that out. That's, that's all I have, unless there's any other questions.
Any other questions?
I have none.
Mr. Coring, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, all powerful, I have no questions. I had kind of, we kind of had the presentation at the, the wonderful, I was going to say Health and Human Service Committee, but it's, no, it's the, uh, uh.
Natural Resources? Natural Resources?
No, we are, Natural Resources. We already had, the commissioners that were there kind of had this pointed out to them. But I sure appreciate Tom and Chris. You guys are doing an excellent job. Like I said, I've never been, at first, I was never a big park guy, but I've, I've come along, come a long way. So I'm just thankful for my little tiny park down in South Long Lake, because the people in my community enjoy it very much during the summer. Thanks. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Commissioner. So with that, Tom, we'll move on to number two on our list, the Forest Resources Plan Update.
Yes, thank you. So we're here to talk about our Forest Resource Plan. This is a plan that guides all of our forest management activity on our 105,000 acres. The plan was first implemented in about 2000, and then it's been updated a few times since then. Last time it was updated, it was 2015, and this is meant to be a 10-year plan for us, a 10-year working plan. It does go out 100 years in the plan, but it's a 10-year working plan. So for 2025, we did a complete wipe of the old plan, just because we had so many updates that we were working on with policies, land ownership changes, updated department structures. And, and so we have the plan here before you today. One, one thing I'd like to point out is that we did redo our forest modeling, so that we took all of our forest inventory data, all the information we have about our cover types, our stands, the ages, and we did a analysis on that to find out what we can sustainably harvest year over year for the next 100 years. We try to maintain an even age class balance throughout the county of all the different species, so that way we have an even flow of wood to the markets. We have hopefully even revenues coming into the county, and sustainable levels of wood for our loggers to harvest. And so that is included in here as well. And we did present this to the Natural Resource Advisor Committee Meeting members back in January, January 8th, and we did ask them for any comments they have, and I did not receive any. So wondering if anybody has any questions or comments or concerns going through the plan?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, you know what? I just had, just a question, curiosity question. I know that we spend a majority of this, these dollars that come in from our forest man, our forest program, but how much do we set aside, because we do maintain many, many, many miles of, in essence, logging roads, how much money is set aside to maintain those roads out of that money?
We, we do budget about, I think it's about 30,000 a year for, for our forest road maintenance efforts. And so the, the management of our tax revenue lands is interesting in that we can't keep any of this, any of these dollars year over year. So they all have to be apportioned out. Some of that does get a portion to the general fund, some goes to the townships, cities, and schools. So we can't keep any money unless the county board sets aside a budget amendment specifically for those, but we do budget about 30,000 a year. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
In the case where we have a lot of the woods, you know, just thinking of the wildfires they had in Los Angeles, do we have a lot of material laying down? Is there anything, I know it's been talked about before, I know we'll be doing hazard plan tomorrow, any way of cleaning up any of that stuff in the woods? Because if we have a dry year, you know, we're worried about the logging and taking out the, you know, productive timber. Is there anything about, you know, because we have a lot of burnables out in the woods right now. I know on my property, I have quite a bit. And is there anything in the plan at all for maintaining that? Because that'll also maintain the forest health.
Yeah, so some of that is inherently accomplished in our management. We do have some that talks about, you know, if we have large natural disasters, like a tornado that comes through, and all of a sudden we have large amounts of wood on the ground, we, we work very hard to figure out where those areas are, and we try to clean them up. And that's where a lot of our efforts and our accomplishments can come from that forest management activity itself. So we're in there salvaging that wood, and then with the way our, our trees grow is that everything greens up very quickly in the spring. So even if a fire does start, it, it's very hard for that, that fire to carry, because everything is so green and growing and lush. We don't have, you know, months on end where we have long, dry spells. We, we get that in the fall time, but generally, we still have lots of leaves and, and things growing in the ground, and our, our types of trees, they, they decompose relatively quickly. They get soft, and it's, it's hard for a fire to carry. We have seen some fires on tax revenue land in the past in slash piles. We had one a couple of years ago where somebody went up and they wanted to light one on fire in the middle of the woods. And we cooperate with the DNR, and the DNR puts those out for us. But just the inherent nature of us, we want to grow, we want to get those trees established very quickly. So either we're out there planting very quickly. We have, we have regulations that talk about our slash management and keeping it low to the ground. So just a lot of our management really helps us there, and we have very vigorous growing forests versus some out west.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions.
One, one question for you, Tom. When a logger goes in and logs it off, and we go back in and replant, what, what determines the ratio of what type you're going to replant in that area?
Sure. So most of our sites are actually natural reforests themselves. We don't have to go in and spend money to replant them.
We don't.
We go in and we'll check to make sure that the trees are growing and are suitable for the site. There are areas that we do plant, and that's all based off the soils data and the, what's the native plant community, what's supposed to be there. So that's, and then we're going in and making a judgment call based off that native plant community. Should be planting red pine, white pine, jack pine, spruce, a variety of each, but mostly just the soils. We're trying to match the soils.
So what, what's the most sought after by the loggers? Which type of log?
That depends. It, we have a strong aspen market here, you know, in the state. We harvest a lot of aspen, but we also have good markets for pine, oak bolts, even basswood, you know, there's a plant, coacid, that takes just basswood. So we grow a lot of different varieties of tree species, which is good for us and diversity and biodiversity, you know, so it's, it's, it's hard to say what they're specifically looking for. One logger might be looking for aspen one day and pine the next.
I just find it curious, because aspen, we do sell a lot of that, looking at the grid here, but it's a very aggressive growing plant, too, so it would be easy to overtake some of these other species that are out there and diminish sort of the quality of those forests, portions of the forest.
Yep, and that's where our management comes in. We have some unique management tools, because aspen can grow like a weed sometimes. It can be, you know, not the ideal tree species we want. We might be trying to grow oak. And so that's when we shift our management from more of a final harvest to a staged harvest. And that, some of that shade, some of that repeated entry will, will eliminate that aspen and let the oak come.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, one more. Do we have much in ash, you know, because of the emerald ash borer? Do we have much in our, in our inventory for ash trees at all?
We, we do. We have some, we have some ash in the county. A lot of our low-lying areas will have ash. We've known about EAB for the last 10 years, and one of the, we've, we've tried to manage some of it, but one of the problems we have is, is we have two types of ash, really ash stands in Minnesota. The type that you can walk in with just your normal boots, and the second type that you have to walk in with almost hip waders. We have a lot of the hip waiter type. And so when we try to harvest those, even in a winter like this, we, it's, we just can't. The equipment sinks, we do more site damage than anything. So we've tried to be proactive and, and harvest along the edges of some of those ash swamps, in combination with other harvests, to try to get some, some younger trees growing and some aspen or other species to creep into that ash swamp. But it, it can be very hard for us to manage ash, and a lot of these will probably revert to some sort of open marsh or a cattail swamp.
Okay.
Over time.
Thank you. Anything else?
So the plan is to bring this back to the board on?
Next, next week.
Next week for final approval for the, for the Forest Resource Plan.
Okay.
Would you like that on consent or regular calendar?
Consent.
Consent, sounds.
Commissioner Coring, you okay with consent?
Consent sounds perfect.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to number three, which is the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment. Gary, are you going to join us up here, or is it just all on Chris now?
I do have a handout.
So Gary asked me to put together a report about the activities with the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment over the last couple of years. And so the one document that you've got on the front is more of a narrative that really maybe more explains. And then the second page is more of the, of just maybe some numbers and, and, and then just the type of applications and the process that we see. So I just wanted to go through that one first with you, just as a reminder of the application types that we see. And so the, the items where the, where you as the board are the final decision maker are the first three on the list. One is for plats. So anytime anybody wants to plat property, that does require the county board to be the final decision maker. And as a reminder, all the plats, we're seeing an increase in those because of the, the number of repairing lots now that require a plat. The second item that takes county board approval is the land use map amendment, or maybe a zoning change might be a different term to look at for that. And then the final is any changes or amendments to the land use ordinance. The board has final say over that. The planning commission's role in, in those applications are to review, hold public hearings, and make recommendations to the board, with, with the board again being the final decision maker. You have delegated decision-making authority on conditional and interim use permits to the planning commission. State statute requires that all variances have to be considered by the, by the Board of Adjustment and their role as in the PCBOA for that. And then any appeal of a staff decision goes to the planning commission, and they're the final decision maker to affirm or to deny if staff made a correct decision. So it's just important to know what the different roles are for, as the different applications that come in. And, and so any of those decisions that are made by the planning commission, where they're the final decision maker, if people are unhappy about a decision, either for or against a request, there's always opportunity to, to appeal that to either District Court or the Court of Appeals in the case of a conditional use permit or a interim use permit.
Mr. Chair, if I could just interject.
Go ahead.
I had an opportunity to go to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meeting last Thursday evening, and one of the things I had communicated to them ahead of time is I'd like to do that on an annual basis, just to kind of review again, what are the responsibilities of the county board? What are the responsibilities of the PCBOA? So that both sides are clear on what their roles and responsibilities are, and for the public as well, so that they know what their avenues and opportunities are, where those processes land as well. So I did cover basically what Chris is talking about here. We talked about that at the PCBOA meeting last Thursday as well.
Excellent. I think that's a great idea, to remind them of where that division of responsibility is.
Yeah, I think it was, it was great to have, have Debbie there, and I think it's just nice, just another resource for the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment to know that they have that as well. So I really was appreciated Debbie showing up at the meeting last Thursday. We had a longer meeting. We had a couple of, some interesting applications, and she made it through the two tough ones. So I was, I was, I was pretty, pretty impressed with that. So that was, last week had some, everyone, so we have those meetings with interesting applications. So, but again, just to remind everybody what the process is, if somebody wants to come in and make an application through to the county, the first step is a development review team. We meet, those are the second and fourth Monday of each month at 9:00 AM. And those are, I'll give you a little more detail on that here in a second. Then the application deadline is typically the second and the third week of the month, depending on how many weeks we're in the month, to actually make the application. We do an onsite visit with the planning commission, which is the first Thursday of the following month, so it's two weeks before the meeting, take the planning commission out onsite to review the property. And then finally, the PCBOA meeting itself is the third Thursday of the month. It's up here in the boardroom. Meeting starts at 5:00. And so we do that, well, every, so we do that 12 times a year, right? It's, we, I always tell staff, it's like we have a sprint. We do a, we sprint 12 times a year to get from DRT to the actual PCBOA meeting on the third Thursday of the month. So those are, that's really the kind of the short process of how we get there, of, you know, just kind of that summary. The, the second page here, if we could go to that, this is just looking at some of the numbers to give you an idea of what we see as far as applications and I think it should be the second, should be the other document, I think. The second page of the other document, maybe. Yep, should be the second page. There we go. Yep. Just, just real quick, we, between 2024 and 23, we averaged about 226 DRT applications. That would be nine meeting, that would be approximately 18 per month. So we're looking at about, we do nine or 10 of those every other Monday, around every 30 minutes. So it gets, you know, it, it takes up a day, approximately most days, to go through to DRT. Just to give you an idea, if you compare like the 2024 and 2023, we had a total of 94 variance applications submitted, and then for conditional use permits, we had 21, and these were in 2024. Land use map amendments were eight. We had 17 plats between preliminary and final. While it doesn't require, it doesn't go to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment, staff that do work in this area also work through the administrative subdivision process and boundary line adjustments. You can see those numbers there as well. And if you jump down to 2023, you'll see we only, we ended up with 69 variance applications in, in 2023, 13 conditional use permits. We had 19 land use map amendments, and then 21 combination of plats preliminary and final in 2023. And so I think what's, what's important to note here, I think, is one, is that there's a lot of, there's a lot of work associated with this, where we're really working very closely with, with customers and constituents on, on different requests and different sorts of, you know, things that pop up and, and different applications. Again, when you look at that DRT, just as a reminder, that is an app, that's that pre-application meeting that we have with applicants or, you know, potential developers or contractors about projects. And the idea is for them to come to a, an opportunity to come to a meeting where county staff are there, the DNR is invited if it's in the Shoreland District, if it's on a highway road, the highway department's invited, if it's on a state road, MINDOT's invited, if it's, and the township is always invited to attend for that, too. And so it gets everybody into the room, gives us an opportunity to work with the applicant, figure out what they want to do, and then provide some feedback. And it's nice, I think it's been very helpful, we, to, to vet these applications, because it helps to improve and enhance that request. It really gives them, I think, more information to be able to process through what types of things that they want to ask for. Most of the applications that come through are typically modified, based on the feedback that they either receive from staff at a county level, possibly from DNR at the state level, or from the transportation representation there, or from the, you know, from the township. And, and to be honest, most of the applicants are very grateful. We're very honest with them. We'll never tell somebody that they shouldn't apply for an application, because they can always apply, but we're, we're very honest and letting them know kind of what has been the track record of the planning commission and the board of adjustment with similar applications over the years, and, and to kind of give them idea of, of things that they might want to consider. The first step we always look at is, can we do what they want to do without a variance? I mean, that is always our first question that we want to ask, is can we, can we handle that? And a lot of those, I think, if you look at that number, that, for example, you had 225 applications this year, and we had 94 of our variances and, you know, 20 conditional use permits, that leaves you approximately in that 80 to 90 number that didn't apply. And those folks that didn't apply, I think, were a couple of reasons. One is that we found a way for them to get a permit for a different way of, of doing what they want to do without having to get a variance. The other one is that some folks didn't realize the cost of what would take to apply for variance, just of getting a survey done and, and that. And then some just didn't feel like maybe their application had a great chance, and so they, they chose to not apply for it. It's also very clear, too, just be, it's not a requirement that, say, if you went to DRT in '24, you have to apply in '24. So somebody could go through the DRT process in '24 and make an application in '25. There's no requirement that you have to do within that 12-month window. But I just, I know that there's a lot of, you know, we hear a lot of, Crowing County, you know, approves all of its variances. And I would say that that, by the time it comes to the board and time for decision-making process, that is pretty accurate, for the reason of development review team, for the reason of this task. development review team, for the reason of the staff working behind the scenes, of helping these applications become more mature and more ready to be brought to the planning commission and board of adjustment for their consideration. You know, the ones that you'll see here that were typically denied in '24 and in '23 were more of the after-the-fact variances. Where, since I started with the county back with here a couple of years ago, there was, seems to be a proliferation of a lot of shoreline activities happening with particularly patios being built more than what's allowed by the ordinance, size, number of that. And the board of adjustment in their role with the planning commission has been very clear that they're not supporting those types of requests so that when people are coming in and making these applications, you know, we're not just looking at what they want to do as far as maybe adding on to the property. We're also looking at the rest of property to verify, you know, hey, when was this? We had a situation down in Christian Coring's district, two meetings ago, where they wanted to get a variance to rebuild a garage up closer to the road that would be allowed because of the setback. And we went down to the lakeshore and there was a nice 300 square foot patio. And said, well, where did that come from? And the builder was not part of that process, but that ended up being part of the variance. They wanted a tri- and after-the-fact variance, and it was denied for the patio, but it was allowed, you know, for them to rebuild that garage up by the road. And so the board has been very clear about addressing these issues as far as these after-the-fact variances, you know, especially in situations where somebody might have a boathouse and they want a patio. And the typical, the response we're giving is, which would you prefer? Would you like to keep your existing boathouse? Or would you like to build a patio? Unfortunately, you can't have both. And the board has been very clear on that. And so it's been helpful for staff to be able to provide that feedback at these DRT meetings to say, you can always apply for your variance, but I don't think you'll get it. And your best bet would be probably to start working on how to gain compliance versus trying to go through that process. So I think that has been a big improvement that we've made over the last couple of years is working through that. I think it's also really important to note that, well, again, going back, we had another situation, this had been over in Commissioner Lee's district, where these folks wanted to apply for variance to build a, to build a newer home. And they had got a permit to build a 700 square foot guest cabin a couple of years before that. But when we went out to do the site visit, all of a sudden we saw there's a shed there. And well, there's a shed, and there's, they ended up having four sheds in the property that were by the water. And so we were able to work with them, even before they got to the meeting itself, which would have been two weeks after that, that they had agreed that they would, we're going to keep the one gazebo and everything else is going to be removed or put into a conformable location and a lot. And so it's, those are the types of things from a staff perspective that we're heading off at the pass ahead of time, so that when these applications do come in, they really are ready for that review by the planning commission and the board of adjustment. It's, I think it's really been very productive and helping people to get, you know, improvements on their property. But we're also very, you know, very concerned about wanting to make sure that we're not letting some of these after-the-fact type situations proliferate. Because I think you, the more you allow them, the more it seems to be encouraged in the area. And we, and I think that's something that we're really working hard to reduce that. Couple of the things that we're working on in '25 that I think are going to be helpful. One is that the board allowed us to hire, a senior environmental service specialist positions, have two of them though, or will be able to have the opportunity to have two of them in the office. And they're going to become the lead for the public hearing program. And so they'll be the ones that'll be working through staff at DRT, are working with, be the lead staff at DRT, coming to the planning commission meetings and heading that up. It's something that I'll have the opportunity to train and to coach those staff into those positions so that they can be, learn how to do that as well. Couple of things that the board has been doing a great job of lately is putting out some very clear conditions as far as what do they want, as far as, you know, we approve a variance, but now we want to see stormwater management and shoreline buffers. One of the things they've been requiring on lots that have, impervious that is kind of starting to get close to that 25% is to require an as-built survey after the work is completed, that we get the survey updated to show that they met the ordinance requirements. And that's going to be very helpful for staff to be able to verify that when that work's been done. Another thing, just from a staff perspective, is that we're putting in place much better process and procedures for how to track our variances, conditional use permits, and these different floodplain permits that we have for effective follow-up to make sure that things that were approved and conditions implemented, did it actually get accomplished or not? And so we're doing, getting some better methods for tracking those things in '25 going forward so that we can now verify that all these different conditions have been required and have been followed through on as part of the permit. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that is really kind of the short report on what we've been doing the last couple of years. The thing I'd like to close with would just be to, I just want to say a thank you to the board for the support that you've given to our department in this area. I appreciate the questions that come when you have different calls from your constituents. I appreciate the opportunity that I'm given to be able to provide the feedback and maybe some of the backstory on some of the different requests. And I also really appreciate how, when you come in, you're very, you're always looking, asking questions and trying to get more information. I know I've got some colleagues that I work with in other counties where some of the boards come in and are very, say, you need to approve this for these certain things. And I just appreciate how you come in and work so with our department and work with Gary and myself and the team as we go forward. I think we've got a great process. I think it works. And I think, I think it serves our, you know, our customers that we serve well, your constituents. And I think at the end of the day, you know, the work that's being done is helping to, you know, to keep that water quality in the county clean, making this Minnesota's favorite place, as well as, you know, trying to, you know, buffer between neighbors and helping to, you know, deal with some of those situations where, you know, certain improvements might, some neighbors don't, I always appreciate certain things that are happening on their neighbor's property and helping us to navigate that well. So I just want to say thank you for that as well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Yes, I have some, Mr. Chair. I did have the opportunity to do some onsite survey with the DRT team, which is, if you haven't had a chance, as a commissioner, go do that, you should do that, just to see the amount of work and the time they spend making sure that it all, that it all fits together. To me, the DRT committee meeting seems like it's kind of a filter. You know, you have all these applications coming in, and then there's some of them that'll just go right on to, if they do whatever they want to do, can go right on to a permit without even going through the variance process or anything.
Yes.
Which I think is really, saves a lot of time for the, for the amount of work that the planning commission, the board of adjustment do, because they do a lot of, they do a lot of work. And if you watch their meetings and as you attended it, they're very methodical in exactly how they process their meetings. So I think they do a very nice job there. One question I have here is, you've got boundary line adjustments. What does that mean? Does that mean you just decide you're going to move the line for somebody? Or how does that work?
So a boundary line adjustment is something that's, is found in our ordinance where sometimes, frankly, people have constructed things on their property where they thought that's where the line was. And next thing you know, they might have built their garage and it's sticking three feet over onto their neighbor's property. So a boundary line adjustment is a process where you hire a surveyor to go out and just remove, move those lines around on the property. The reason why, the reason why we need to be involved in that, A, is to make sure that they're not creating substandard lots by moving boundary lines around. Two is to make sure if they are moving around, is it creating the right buffer setback around that structure? And three is, anytime you move a boundary and you change that leave of description, you need to record new deeds. And so we want to make sure that, because people have done surveys to move boundaries, but they never got the deed recorded to show that that was actually what was done. And what's, a survey is great, but what matters is the deed that was recorded in the property.
As it been recorded, yeah. Ran into.
And so that's why we, that's why we have some oversight on those boundary line adjustments. And this typically more shoreline than anything, so.
But does that go, does the cost of that go to the applicant who's applying for the thing? The, you know, because there's a surveying cost or some other costs involved. That all is part of the application?
Yep. So boundary line adjustment required to hire a registered surveyor in the state of Minnesota to go out and do the boundary line adjustment, redraw the lines, redo the legal description. And then that's submitted to our office for review. It's a hundred dollar fee for that, the fee for us to review it. And then once that gets approved, then they've got a 12-month window to either work with an attorney or a title company to draft the deeds and get that recorded.
Okay. And you do a good job of follow-up? I mean, you know, because I know they make requirements, conditions on these permits. Somebody goes and does that follow-up to make sure that those are?
One of the nice, one of the nice parts about our department is that we have a recorder right in, right in the office with us. So they will be, they, if they see these things coming in, they're going to want, they will check with our environmental services staff to see, did they get a boundary line adjustment for this? Or was there an administrative subdivision? They'll, they want to, they will want to see what was the, what was the?
Result?
The process that now generated these new deeds to be recorded and stuff. So it's actually very nice to have a recorder sitting right next to us so we can actually have those, get that answered much easier and get that figured out. So, yeah, we do follow-up. Unfortunately, what happens if you've done a boundary line adjustment or an administrative subdivision, or even a final plat, if you haven't recorded in the timeframe, you have to start over.
I've seen that. That happened once already, didn't it?
Starts over, unfortunately.
But as far as you're doing stormwater abatement, that type of stuff, are those followed up on? Because they're also a part of conditions of the permit.
Yeah. And so every, what we do every year is, and starting in '25, we're going to be ramping it up even more. But we do have a pretty robust program for following up on our repairing permits, the waters that are right on the lakes, to make sure that all those conditions are met. Starting in 2025, we're going to be doing that much more intentional about doing those inspections through the construction process. And so we're going to be out doing inspections during the summer months as things are being built to verify that is the silt fence up in place and is it, you know, is all the BMPs that they would need to protect the water up for that. And so we have a much, we have a plan and a process for a much more robust inspection process starting in 2025.
So I just, we'll make a couple remarks. First of all, I know a few years ago, and I think that's, at least Gary's well aware, that after-the-fact variances are a burr under my saddle. I like it when people follow the rules. And I noticed that they've come down. I noticed that the PCBOA is a lot stronger in whether they'll accept some of those or not. I think they're doing a great job in there. So I'm glad to see, and you made the comment in the, in the narrative that you have, that you've seen a lot fewer of those come through. And as I've watched the agendas, I've seen a lot fewer of them also. So I appreciate that. And that's making a fair field for everybody to?
Right.
To play in. So then the other thing is, I just want to say that the whole process, I think, is providing a great customer service because we're not letting them get out of line. And we're working with them to try to make it work as best we can on whatever piece of property they are. Because we always hear that statement, you know, it's my property, I should be able to do what I want. Well, that's not exactly true. And having said that, I think the DRT and the PCBOA work very hard to accommodate almost every one they can. And I think that's great customer service. So thank you very much for all the work that both of those groups do and the staff, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions? I think with that, we're done for the day at this meeting.